Yes, I did. Girl.
Yeah, I don't have, uh, I don't have any pictures of it. But I'll be there next time.
Oh, that's not. I was supposed to raise this for Ronnie, but I don't see Ronnie. I was supposed to raise this for Ronnie.
It's a threatening action.
It was just a signal to Ronnie. I call this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. May I have a motion to certify closed session, please?
Madam Chair, I certify to the best of each member's knowledge that Williamsburg James City County School Board while in closed session discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law that only such public matters as were identified in the motion can be in the closed meeting or heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Can I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Sersa, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Ownby.
Here.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Closed session has been certified. That brings us to the public hearing on fiscal year 2019 operating budget at six, um, at six thirty, which is now. Sorry, I shouldn't have read that all the way across. Um, so I'd like to open the public hearing. Dr. Beers, will you read instructions for our speakers?
Yes. This is the time when citizens who have submitted speaker cards are invited to address the board. Speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their name for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. Each speaker is allocated three minutes. Time cannot be yielded to another speaker. Personal matters are not discussed in open school board meetings, and we ask that you be, that you refrain from making reference to specific individuals. The board is interested in hearing all comments fully and request that citizens refrain from verbal outbursts, applause, or any other type of demonstration. Although the board does not respond comment, does not respond to comments at this time, please note that we are listening and appreciate your time. Thank you for adhering to these guidelines, Madam Chair. This concludes my directions.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Ownby, how many cards do we have tonight?
Two.
Okay, thank you.
Julie Cullifer. Cullifer.
My name is Julie Cullifer, and I am a parent of three children, one of whom which is a special education student. I also serve as the chair for the WJCC Special Education Advisory Committee. I am here tonight to briefly discuss the budget in special education. I recognize that the school board is in a challenging position given that the division is subject to the funds provided and that this amount does not always equal the funds requested or needed to meet all needs. Further complicating matters, IDEA is an unfunded mandate that places requirements on the school division irrespective of whether the funds exist. As a result, what often ensues is a complicated allocation of resources that sometimes leaves the division not being able to provide the best resources, but rather provide the minimal requirements to meet the unfunded mandate given financial constraints. However, in this year's proposed budget, there is real hope for a substantial increase in special education support with the request of four additional special education teacher, teachers, and a behavior intervention specialist. These requests, in my opinion, largely demonstrate a commitment to working toward improving our division's support of sped students. Compared to our neighboring localities, WJCC schools has one of the largest student-to-teacher ratios at sixteen sped students per teacher compared to Hampton at thirteen students per teacher and York County at twelve students per teacher. For three consecutive years, enrollment of special education students in the division has increased significantly, adding a total of almost two hundred sped students during this time. If we do not place priority on hiring special educators, the student-per-teacher ratio will continue to increase further, when ironically, this is the population that benefits most from small group instruction and direct one-on-one teaching. If WJCC as a division wants to demonstrate a commitment to these different learners and ensure these learners have the best chance at success, we must place a priority on hiring a proper staff to support them. One such support, I believe, will be invaluable to the division and may also represent a cost savings, is the addition of a behavior intervention specialist. The increase of inclusion practices across the nation has resulted in more and more educators who never intended to teach special education students, who are not versed in differential instruction for diverse learners with challenges, are being asked to educate these students with proper supports. A behavior specialist would help reduce problem behaviors of all students, not just sped students, by training and equipping educators with necessary tools, thereby reducing the likelihood that a child would need a more restrictive placement that comes at a significant cost to the division for one student. Not only would a behavior specialist be responsible for conducting functional behavioral assessments and writing behavior intervention plans across the division, more importantly, this specialist could ensure that the plans are working, make any corrections with staff, and ensure successful implementation resulting in a reduction in problem behaviors. This type of specialization would be invaluable to the division. As the board takes the budget to our funding partners, I would encourage the municipalities to support the division's request to help fund our special education needs. I would also ask that if ultimately this board is asked to make cuts to its budget, that serious consideration be made to preserve the crucial sped positions that ultimately will help better serve WJCC sped students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Cullifer.
My name is Kara Newman. I'm a parent of two students at WJCC schools, one of whom is a student receiving special education services. I am also a member of the Special Education Advisory Committee. When the proposed budget was presented to the SEAC, I was quite pleased to see that it included four additional sped teachers and a behavior intervention specialist. With our division's sped SOL test scores stagnant or even slightly declining, it is clear that more attention needs to be given to our sped students. As a matter of fact, the sped SOL scores are the lowest in the division. They are even lower than ELL students and students who are economically disadvantaged. In reference to the behavior intervention specialist position, I would like to suggest to you all tonight that the position would be best filled by a board-certified behavior analyst, or a BCBA, as they are commonly called. To get this board certification, the BCBA's have to have a minimum of a master's degree and have over fifteen hundred hours of direct supervision hours in the practice of applied behavior analysis, or ABA. ABA is an evidence-based practice and has a large amount of research sowing its effectiveness in improving children's outcomes, both cognitively and with language, language skills. This amount of training and education makes a BCBA an expert in the area of behavior. BCBA's have a comprehensive understanding of best practices in behavior intervention, assessment, and data collection. They are committed to maintaining a high standard of ethical procedures and focus on skill development as well as behavior reduction. BCBA's are trained to complete functional behavior analyses with multiple sources of data collection and write behavior intervention plans. They evaluate interventions and intervention components for effectiveness and could provide staff with professional development on behavior intervention plans to help ensure consistency. All of these things, and many more that I don't have time to discuss at length, would help save the division time and money by creating more effective interventions for the students, which leads to faster and more targeted behavior changes and decreases the need for adult support and ultimately has six BCBA's on their staff. While they have a much higher enrollment, including the number of sped students, it is worth looking at other districts in the area. The number of sped students in WJCC, which is approximately seventeen hundred, is very close to the number enrolled in both Portsmouth and Suffolk, approximately sixteen hundred and seventeen hundred respectfully. Both schools have, already have a BCBA on staff. In fact, it was widely publicized last year when the Portsmouth School Board voted to hire a BCBA, even if the position was not funded by their funding partners, because they recognized the need for such a person with specialized training and experience. I applaud you for adding this position into your budget for next year and would encourage you to hire a BCBA for this position and would encourage you to consider the same action of Portsmouth City Public Schools if need be. Thank you.
Ms. Newman. That closes the public hearing, which brings us to our work session and action items. Ms. Sersa, will you call the attendance roll, please?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Ms. Ownby.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here. I'd like to note that Ms. Hummel's not able to join us this evening, but sends her regards. Next up is four point zero two approval of the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, with approval, the agenda is presented.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Sersa, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ownby.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. That brings us to announcements and superintendent's report. Dr. Heron.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Earlier this year, Stonehouse Elementary was named a national blue ribbon school. I would like to thank Senator Tommy Norman and Delegate Brenda Pogie for sponsoring a joint resolution in the General Assembly commending Stonehouse Elementary for its achievement. As stated in the resolution, Stonehouse Elementary's school selection as a national blue ribbon school is a tribute to the outstanding work of its students, exemplary leadership, and dedication of its administrators, teachers, and staff. More than twenty years ago, Mr. Charlie Dubay, biology, biology teacher at the then-new Jamestown High School, formed his first Envirothon team. On January nineteenth, Mr. Dubay and his latest team were honored at the Colonial Soil and Water Conservation District's Award Dinner for their outstanding contributions to conservation education. The Envirothon is a competition in which high school students from around the Commonwealth demonstrate their knowledge of environmental science and natural resource management. The Jamestown team is a perennial all-star among Virginia teams, having won the state competition in two thousand ten. Last year, the team missed claiming the title again by a two-point margin and took second place for the third year in a row, so congratulations to the Envirothon team. Later this evening, we'll hear more about our strategic planning process, but I wanted to take this opportunity to encourage members of our community to take our input survey. The survey is available on the division's website, wjccschools.org. Your voice matters, so please jump online and take the survey and tell us what you think. Those are all of the announcements I have this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Mrs. Young?
Thank you. Yes, I, I serve on the Twenty First Century Learning Committee, and I just wanted to give you an update. This, this past week, we met and we talked about the opportunity that's going to be afforded to students here in Jame, in the WJCC schools, and there's going to be five cybersecurity internships that are going to be available to our students, and I'm sure that Dr. Kara will have more to say about that later. There's also going to be things for exploratory Saturday for our seventh and eighth graders. I'm very excited about what's going on with the CTE, because I think we're going to have an opportunity to see that students are going to have a lot more opportunities. I have two pages, but those are the two main points. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements? Okay. So the next item up is citizen comments, but I don't believe we have any cards. Okay. So that brings us to our proposed agenda items, items that we'll discuss tonight and learn about tonight, and then we'll be on our next meeting agenda for action. So the first one is seven point zero one, award a contract for invitation for bid number eighteen dash one-two-one-three-six, Stonehouse Elementary School bus canopy construction. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Snipes is already at the podium to present this item this evening.
Good evening, School Board Chair, School Board Members. Dr. Heron, last month, you signed the right-of-way on the maintenance agreement with VDOT for the Stonehouse bus canopy, and tonight, I'm here to explain to you the scope of work for that project. Again, this project was approved in FY seventeen CIP in the amount of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars. The scope of work for this project includes, includes four new, four new canopies along the sidewalk at Stone, at Stonehouse. It will go all the way to the entrance, so if anyone's looking, it will proceed from the bus loop to the entrance. It includes demolition of the existing sidewalks and to place them back in ADA compliance once they have been demolished. It will include footings, it will include some patching of the sidewalks, and of course, landscaping. At the time this agenda item went out, bids had not been received. They will be, they will be returned to us by March twentieth at your next meeting.
Any questions for Mr. Snipes? If not, we'll move to the next item. Item seven point zero two, award a contract for invitation for bid number eighteen dash one-two-one-one-seven, construction services for the Laurel Lane Elementary School HVAC replacement.
Yes, this, this project was included in the FY eighteen CIP in the amount of four million, five thousand dollars. However, we also had design that was included last year for this project. The project will also include commissioning as well as some, some, some surveying for, for Laurel Lane. In addition, the project will renovate the entire existing HVAC system. We will be removing the entire HVAC system from Laurel Lane. As you're aware, Laurel Lane is pod, so they're going to have to take a little bit of the roof off to put some things in. It's a simple explanation. They'll be replacing the HVAC in the media center, the cafeteria, the kitchen, the kitchen. This will be done in two phases. Phase one will include the one hundred and three hundred buildings this year, and phase two, which will be next summer, will include the two hundred, four hundred, and five hundred buildings. You will see as part of the agenda item that substantial completion will be August twentieth, and that final completion will be September nineteenth. However, that final completion will not interrupt school. It's just a matter of punch list and, and checking some things off.
Any questions for Mr.?
So I know when DJ had their HVAC system replaced a few years ago, they were able to have a geothermal HVAC system, so will Laurel Lane?
No. Laurel, Laurel Lane will have a variable refrigerant system. Geothermal was not included with this project.
And so is there a reason, what is the, is there a cost benefit and not like, is it because, is it because of the kind of building? Is there a reason why we're not doing geothermal?
Well, geothermal is, is a initial outlay of much more than just a regular HVAC system that would you replace, so that's one of the reasons is the cost factor involved with doing a geothermal. So when we first looked at what we were going to do there, you're, you're looking at cost, and Mr. Kelly's smiling.
He's looking at me.
Does the geothermal last longer? Like, when you look at, like, how long, like, longevity of it?
It's not, it's not the longevity, it's when you are replacing the unit, so it's how much you're replacing at a particular point in time.
Yeah, I had several questions, and you answered them all as you went through, so, so thank you for that. The geothermal, you know, to put the stuff in the, put the, in the ground and, and in the pod system at Laurel Lane, you would need a lot of different ground, a lot of different places, and it's just, and I don't, and it doesn't really save you that much money anyway. So I understand why you didn't.
That brings up another point. Are we putting, I mean, I saw on the agenda, but are we doing geothermal at James Blair?
No, we are not. We have looked at geothermal, and every year we provide a superintendent, probably coming up this month, with the cost savings that geothermal has over a regular system, which I'm calling a regular system. It's, it's not much cost savings. Again, the cost saving come later when you don't have to replace a geothermal system in twenty years, which you would have to do with a system such as this.
Thank you.
I have a question about the budget. I just want to, because there's a couple of budget elements here. So, so this was already funded in the CIP budget at roughly two hundred thousand, but in order to make the numbers work, a little bit more money was transferred from the CIP fund balance. Is that right? Okay. And then we're banking on an approval for four million in the request that we've already adopted and hoping gets funded.
That's correct. And purchasing has language in the RFP, which will advise the award winner that funding for the project is not available till July one. So many times in the past, they've already, a vendor will take on the work, knowing that they have a notice of intent to proceed.
And I think the notice also says that it's dependent upon funding.
Right.
Available funding if approved.
And so if it doesn't get funded, it just, we just stop?
We don't do the project.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anything else? All right. That brings us to item seven point zero three, award a contract for request for proposal number eighteen dash one-two-zero-five-eight, furnishings for James Blair Middle School. Oh, thank you, Mr. Snipes. I thought you were saying, sorry, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Barnes is going to take this one, because it's not construction and geothermal and things like that. It's furniture. So we're, we're making a shift for this one. Thank you, Ms. Barnes.
Sure, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, other board members, and Dr. Heron. Our evaluation team has been working in collaboration with the county's purchasing authorities, you know, Mrs. Mrs. Sherrell Murphy and Ms. Kitty Hall, and we began by posting a request for information, and several vendors attended, and they brought samples of their, of their products. So the event was both interesting and extremely helpful, because it gave you more of a, a three-dimensional look instead of just looking at catalogs. Following that, we issued an RFP, and the team reviewed each proposal. The team is in its final stages of approval, so being as such, the agenda item is actually a placeholder tonight, and we should be making that decision relatively soon. We'll have an award for you at your next board meeting on March the twentieth.
Any questions for Ms. Barnes?
So, does this proposal include furnishings for related arts, like kiln for the art teacher, or instruments for band, or?
This one is actually just for the furniture. Yes, ma'am.
Another one is coming for all of those.
There will be a series of requests relating to the James Blair in the next several meetings.
Although not all of those purchases meet the threshold of having to.
That would be correct.
Board approval, but get reported to us in the monthly financials, right?
Absolutely.
So we can learn about the kiln elsewhere, perhaps?
Okay. I'll put that on my list.
Are you interested in the kiln?
And the band instruments.
We can do that.
Anything else?
No.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Barnes. All right. That brings us to item eight point zero one, introduction and overview of the two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-three strategic plan development process. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a fabulous morning with staff this morning, working with Valbrun Consulting Group, starting to, at the early stages of the development of the strategic plan, and Dr. Murphy is going to introduce our guests this evening, and we're going to be providing with you an overview of the process. Dr. Murphy.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Heron. As you know, we have partnered with the Valbrun Consulting Group to develop our two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-three strategic plan. We are pleased to have with us tonight representatives from the group that will be working closely with the division over the next few months. With us tonight, we have Ms. Valda Valbrun, CEO of the Valbrun Consulting Group, Mr. Michael Necrits, a senior consultant with the firm, Ms. Catherine Block, a senior consultant with the firm, and Ms. Melanie DeShamps, the executive project manager. And now, Ms. Valbrun will come up and take us through an overview of the process and the timeline.
Good evening, Dr. Heron and members of the board. I'm happy to be here. My name is Valda Valbrun, as you heard, and I'm really excited to be embarking upon this strategic planning process with the school district. I want to just walk you through our, our really ambitious timeframe for this evening, but I want to assure you that we're really excited and, and able to get through this timeframe. So I'll, I'll leave some time for questions when I get to the end, but I want to walk us through the process map. So we've, we are really focused on being very collaborative in, in our design, and so our co-design model is such that we've worked very closely with Dr. Murphy and the team to construct a timeframe that's going to work for the district and that's going to really encompass us having some rich engagement with members of your community. So in the month of February, even prior to us coming here for, for today, we developed this co-design model, we've looked at some documents, we've developed our, our communication strategy, so you might have noticed that the survey has been launched, you might have noticed that there's posters that are already encouraging folks to take the survey. We've established a core team of, of internal team that's going to be working on the planning. We've designed a really robust engagement schedule, so when we return in April, we're going to be meeting with all types of focus groups, and we're going to really hear the voice of our constituents. There have been surveys that have gone out to the senior leadership team, and we were able to really closely examine documents that were made available to us, as well as examine the website to get a really, kind of an external view of, 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 of the district from an outsider's perspective, and from that, we were able to develop a, a kind of an initial findings report that we shared with the leadership team today. So all that happened prior to us even coming here today. So our work in March is to really work closely, as we began today, to work closely with the leadership team, and to think about what success looks like in five years. So today, we spent time really visioning and kind of crafting that story. What's that narrative of how the district will look in five years, and then how do we get there? And so we talked about what that experience that you want to create for your students and stakeholders will be, and we really talked about how do we lead that work? One of the things we talked about today in our session was this idea of how do we make sure that we're not just keeping the trains running, but that we're really working hard to, to engage people in a way that's going to get us to the vision? And so a lot of our work today was really focused on what does it mean to lead this process? And, and because, and one of the things that, that's really important is that we don't want people to think that you've hired an external partner to come in and do the work, right, of creating a strategic plan, but to help facilitate that process in a, in really rich and engaging way so that everybody's voice is part of the planning. And so what we'll do tomorrow is visit some school sites. We have an opportunity to see, you know, see, see instruction in, in, in action and see, see your district and really have a good sense of, of what it means to be a, a member of your school community. The survey that's currently being launched will be open until, at this point, we're thinking March ninth, and it may be extended, but what we'll do with those results is share those results back with you no later than March twenty-third. In April, we will return, and we're going to spend some days in the district, three days, really listening to the voices of all key stakeholders. So there'll be focus groups that are going to involve students, parents, community members, all employees, and our hope is to, is to really engage people in some really good discussions about where they see the district headed, where they see the bright spots, where they see areas for improvement, and really collect all that information, and so we'll use that to develop a SWOT analysis and be able to share back with you, what do we see as strengths, where are their weaknesses, where are their opportunities, and where are their threats that we should make sure that we pay attention to as we develop strategic plan? And so that'll be shared with, shared back with the district by April thirtieth. Then in May, we're going to spend two days with our core working team, and that two days is going to be, I like to call this retreat, a planning retreat, where we're going to really spend time analyzing all of that data that we've called. So we'll look at the SWOT analysis, we'll look at the survey results, we'll look at all of these findings, and, and we're going to identify the things that are, that surface as most important for us to include in this strategic plan, and so we're going to identify those priorities and look at what those critical issues are, and not just develop goals and statements, but also think about what does that mean for, you know, is it feasible, is it sustainable? What is it going to mean five years down, down the line? And so we're going to go through some, two days of activities and work and really making sure that that happens, and then we will publish draft goals for feedback and input. During that time also in May, we're going to look at those, those ways that we can think about, how do we assess value, look at the appropriateness of strategies that are developed, think about the cost benefit and timing, so we will tie it to budget. We'll, we'll look at, how do we make sure that everybody owns the strategic plan? So it's not about just developing a plan and then, you know, giving it to folks and say, okay, you know, buy into this plan. We really want to make sure that there's ownership in the plan, and so we're going to be very transparent in how we communicate as we're developing the plan. So that our goal is that by June, we do have a finalized plan that we can submit for review and that you will be able to adopt your plan by June thirtieth. Sounds ambitious, but it's very doable. And, and so I want to take some questions and just, just to make sure that you all are, are feel, feel comfortable with the process.
Questions for Ms. Valbrun? Mr. Kelly?
I don't know that I have, I have real questions. I appreciate your energy, I appreciate you coming on board. You know, the strategic plan doesn't get necessarily a lot of press, doesn't really seem real exciting, but it is very much a very, very important part of what this board does and, and what, and working with the administration to develop that. So I, I appreciate everything that you're getting ready to do, and, and we staying ready to work with you.
Excellent. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, Dr. Murphy and Ms. Valbrun.
Thank you.
Appreciate your being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I'm particularly interested in connecting it to, to our investment through the budget and making sure that our. making sure that our, that process is strategic as well, yeah.
Yes, that'll be a vital part of it to really look at what it's going to cost and whether it's feasible, and how we'll have to spread out our ambitious plan depending on the budget available as well. So that'll be a big part of the process. Thank you very much indeed. Thank you.
Anything else before we move on to our budget discussion? So the next item is the discussion of the fiscal year 2019 operating budget. At our last meeting, Dr. Heron and Ms. Barnes presented to us the proposed superintendent's budget in a fair amount of detail, and so this is our opportunity to sit around the table and discuss it and ask questions, and then we are poised to put this on the next meeting agenda for potential adoption, and if we're not ready, then we'll meet again later in March. But at current, plan is to put it on the next agenda for consideration. So anyway, with that, Ms. Young, I know, Ms. Young, I know you wanted to
Madam Chair, as you well know, as a member of the school board of Williamsburg James City County,
Oh, sorry, thank you.
I acknowledge that I have an interest in the fiscal year 2018-19 school budget because my wife is an employee of the WJCC schools. However, I believe that I'm in a, I am able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly and in the public interest.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, for that important reminder. I'd also like to add that as a member of the school board of the Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge that I have an interest in the fiscal year 2018-2019 school budget because I'm an employee of the Williamsburg Health Foundation. However, I believe that I'm able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly and in the public interest. With that, Mrs. Young, would you like to begin the conversation?
Right, yes. One of the things that I've been thinking a lot about, and I'd like our board to discuss, is after the Parkland shooting, that's been a high priority in my thinking, and I would like to discuss the security at our high schools. I understand that the resource officers are given to us by the Williamsburg City Police and James City County Police Department. Currently, we have three security guards at each of our school. I'd like to talk about whether or not we feel we need to add more, or if, because that is a budget issue, or do we believe that three at each of the high schools is enough? And then secondly, the second part of that discussion is currently, we only have a part-time security at our middle schools, and I don't know about our elementary schools.
We don't have any school security officers at our middle schools. We do have some coverage from SROs, part-time, I believe, at Berkeley.
So I, right, so I think the conversation isn't necessarily about school security as a whole, but with this budget in front of us, do we want to have a conversation about directing Dr. Heron to figure out if we should invest more resources in security at the high school, middle school, elementary school levels, all three, none, you know, beyond what we already have? And if so, if she can bring, she and her team can bring that information back to us. And then I think added to that conversation is if that is the direction of this board, whether or not, what the opportunity cost might be, what we would, might prioritize that over something else. So with that, I thank Mrs. Young for bringing up the topic, and curious what everybody else thinks.
Yeah, add something to that, and it may mean additional cost. I brought this up last year, the notion that we have cameras in place in all of our schools, especially cameras that can see what's going on outside of the school. And when I asked what the purpose of the cam, of the cameras was, the response was so that we have a record of what has happened if something happens. I would like, I'd like the superintendent to consider and what the cost might be, to make sure that we have somebody that is watching those screens constantly. And the Parkland tragedy is a really good example of that. There was a lot of discussion about looking at the tapes after the event was over, but there was really no discussion of did, how, did somebody see somebody outside? And so I think it's important enough, I don't think it would be overly expensive, and it could very well be that, you know, trained staff who are already in the building could take on that responsibility. But I just think that's what everybody's always relying on, and it's always after the fact. And I would like to see, and it may mean having to look at, you know, how that, how we're able to do that sort of thing, but, and there may be a cost associated with that, but I, I think it kind of dovetails what Mrs. Young was talking about. I think, I think it's important to be able to be proactive rather than always reactive, so that's all.
Anybody else?
About that or about the budget?
Yeah, about that piece of the conversation, okay, so, all right. Okay, Mr. Kelly, I sensed some things on the tip of your tongue about the budget?
No, 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 I just, I spent some time, spent some time with the book. It's, it's, it's very transparent, it's very, there's a lot of data in here. Transparency is very good, but also it allows people to really kind of dive into the, into the details. And anyway, at the end of the day, it is just a budget. So I do have, I do have a couple of questions, some comments, and some I'm not, you know, I can't expect anyone to know every line item of the budget, so you have lots of friends you can phone here, and if not, you can always say I can, I'll get back to you. So I don't, I don't have the expectation that you know everything. So on page 12, where we have the teacher, school, staffing allocation, the enrollment numbers, are those the September 30 numbers?
So, look at what you're looking at, Mr. Kelly.
12.
Yes.
Okay.
What we're projecting.
Okay, so it'd just be interesting to, interesting to me, I mean, I see if, how much those have grown since September 30th, to kind of get a feeling for where they are next year. I know, for instance, one of our elementary schools that, the student, the class ratios are not that, that way in first grade. The, the next, next one is page 15 is more of a comment here. You have operating fund preliminary projected revenue detail based on the governor's, the governor's budget.
Yes, sir.
What's interesting is, is the complication of that, and that each one of these line items probably has a couple of forms in triplicate that need to be filled out, and, you know, there's really, you know, to account for all of this on a line-by-line detail is really a lot of work that I don't know that it gets fully appreciated, but I want to say that I do appreciate it, and I thank you for that. On page 21, lines 6,008, we have a, it seems we have a significant increase in our budgeted for vehicle-powered equipment fuels from the actual in 17 of 644 to over a million now. Is there a reason for that?
I can't explain my, the reasoning for, you know, for the budget that took place prior to my arrival. However, looking at this, of course, we're keeping it the same for next year simply because we know that we'll have additional buses because of the new middle school.
That's, that's logical, I can follow that. I also see that we have a pretty significant increase in staff development, which I think is great. I think investing in our staff is important. And then when you, when you start looking at these numbers, and you realize that by my numbers at least, 86.6% of our budget is people.
Yes, sir.
And realize that, that we're in a people business, and I just, that's, you know, that's where our money needs to be. Page 64, so line 510, cost center 510 vocational ed, where we have 104% increase in, in that?
Yes, sir. The, I believe the project lead the way will fall under this as well.
Okay, that is also logical. So on, on page 74, we start getting to the cost centers for each individual school, and we have FTEs for those schools. I noticed that some of them are different from 18 to 19, is that on projected enrollment and?
Yes, sir, it's based on the projected enrollment and also, and if there have been any shifts within the year, within the current year.
Oh, shifts of staff?
Yes, sir.
So we budgeted one number, and then we went?
Exactly. We may have found the need in one of the other schools, and so we transferred that, that employee to that school, and of course, we'll make a change.
Got you, okay. Let's see, I'm not sure what my comment is there, but I'm sure it was brilliant. So 129, Merrimack Juvenile Detention Center, is, that's page 129, it says it's a state-operated program overseen by WJCC. Do these numbers show up in either our operating budget, in our operating budget on the revenue side or on the expenses? This is just a page that this is what we spend, but it's not?
Yes, sir, they're actually a separate fund.
Got you, okay. And then my last, my last one on page 132, actually, there's two of them here when I look at it. So we look at, we look at state revenue, and so since, from 2015 to now, we've had a 2.6% increase, but yet we've had a 6% increase on the local revenue.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, that, for me, that says that the state's not keeping up their end of the bargain, but that's, because they, those numbers should at least, should rise in unison if, if they
Of course, we do have the additional funding that the, that the county and city are providing for the, for the new staff at James Blair.
I totally, I totally get it, but, but, but state, the state funding and if, if they should all go up 4%, 4%, 6%, whatever, but that's another, another line. Object code 411090 on page 133 with the athletic fees. It seems that those, the athletic fees that we've been collecting have been going down.
Sir.
And then we budgeted for $100,000 in 19. I'm just curious as to what our logic is, that we think it's going to go up 20,000, or, or is that more of a nuance than?
It is, it is, Mr. Kelly, because we're looking at the current budget, and we're not seeing at this time the projection that the revenue will decrease.
Do we have understanding of the logic of why those fees are going down?
Unfortunately, I don't, but I can certainly look into it.
I was just curious, it seems to be progressive going down, and we haven't changed the number. We, I don't think we've changed our, the number of student activities that we have, it's just interesting that those numbers, but once again, when you break the budget down to this level of detail, allows me to figure that out and ask those kind of questions. So now flip back to page nine, where we talk about an average, our expenditure increases on number three, it's a 1.5% salary increase plus a step or increase for an average total 3% salary increase for teachers, and then 3% salary increase for all support and administrative staff. So, so when, when it's an average total of 3%, half of the people are not happy because they're not getting 3%, and half the people are happy because they're getting more than 3%.
Oh, I can't say it would be half and half, but yes. Not necessarily.
Well, it's a mean, mean a median, I got it, I'm just
I believe it's because when they start with the salary scales, you know, we have the, where they should end up, and then we adjust at the $1,500, starting especially for teachers. And then HR had to work the percentage in between, so some will receive slightly more than 1.5% in step size, and some slightly less.
Right.
But we made sure that no one, of course, would see it.
So, so from our perspective, on average, it's going to go up 3%, so we can budget that. But what I would tell the, tell the staff to do is that you need to look at your numbers in your particular situation to see, because, because we're going to adjust the, we're going to adjust the scale by the 1.5, and then when you take the step, it's your different number. So I know Mrs. Owenby asked a question about for those at the top of the scale, so are they getting the 1.5, or are they getting?
It actually equates to about 2.4% of those at the top of the scale.
Okay, great, and I'm done.
I have a couple of questions. One thing, I'm curious about the Merrimack Juvenile Detention Center. I see that the budget has gone down ever so slightly, about $900,000. The question I have is, is that based on the number of students? Is it based on a budget that the Merrimack Center comes up with? What's the deal with that?
When I started with this, it's actually the funding that we received from the state.
Right.
And that, that's how I apply it.
So it just, it just flows?
It's like a pass-through, we're the fiscal agent for the Merrimack Center.
So that's actually coming from the state?
Correct, it's all state money, it's driven by the number of students, but we're literally serve as the fiscal agent, and lots of surrounding area use the facility.
Right, I've always been curious about that, and I've actually met some of the teachers down there. One other question, and this probably has budget implications, a comment was made tonight on I, and we've also seen, I've seen the ratios and documents before, is that 16 to 1 ratio in special education, is that in part due to the, or is it a reflection of not just the number of students, but the category of disability that they fall into, meaning that some students need far closer supervision than other students, or that a number of students are in inclusion classrooms?
I believe the 16 to 1 is actually just a straight number divided by the number of teachers, and
The formula is very complex, so Ms. Bourgeois can give us a sense of where that number came from.
Good evening. When we were looking at the, trying to do a comparison to local, other local school divisions, you're exactly right. It, what we provided in that one slide is an exact one teacher per number of students ratio. That doesn't necessarily mean that's the caseload, because as you said, some of those students could count either one or two points, as we've explained how our numbering system goes. So it's, it's hard to know that across school divisions. We could certainly identify that for our students, but not for other school divisions.
So in other words, it's, it's not necessarily a negative thing for us simply because of how, who serves those students?
What I would say is when you're, when you're getting up to a caseload average of 16 students and the max is 20, that you really are at, at a kind of a high end of as far as the workload for teachers. Because that's, you know, if you have eight students and you have eight IEPs to do, that's, that's one set of requirements. But if you have 16, or 18, or 19 students, and you're doing that many IEPs and triennials and eligibilities, it really adds to the workload of the teachers.
So it would behoove us, so, so what are we really saying, that we're, we're approaching the max and we're going to need some more, some more people?
Our numbers continue to grow, yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
I think what we did in, Ms. Bourgeois and Dr. Barrow really looked very carefully at all of our students and where they fall in the spectrum of need, and points are allocated per student based on the level of need. And so they looked at all of those, and several classrooms are actually at a max right now. I think I'm getting this right?
Correct.
And so this, the addition of staff is very appropriate at this time.
All right, definitely. Thanks.
I just wanted to ask Ms. Bourgeois a question. If you're a regular classroom teacher, how many, is there a formula for deciding how many inclusion students can be in your classroom?
There is no formula, no ma'am. There, we try to use a best practice within the master schedule. You don't really want it to be more than a third of any particular one class at the most.
And we can't assume that they're, they're evenly distributed across all the schools, can we? Or can we?
No, you cannot.
So some schools are going to, may very well require more resources in that area than some of those.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So this, my second question is, how does the, we have allocated funding for four new special ed teachers, how will that affect? I mean, we don't have any idea what the student population will be by the time we get to the 2019 budget, but
So we start that process fairly early, we're actually working through that right We're actually working through that right now. We look at what students are exiting as twelfth graders and graduates. We look at what students were gaining from Bright Beginnings. Bright Beginnings staff have already met with our special education department to, to provide numbers and types of programs that will be appropriate for those students. As far as we know right now, that can change. We look at our students transitioning from fifth to sixth grade and eighth to ninth grade, so we start to look at all of that. And from here on out, we're looking at it pretty much weekly.
One more question, and we, we did not, I'm asking, my, mine is, I just want to know, we did not cut the behavioral specialist, did we?
There was one behavioral specialist.
Right, that's still in the budget.
Still in the budget.
Okay, that's what I want to know. Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions about the?
Yeah, yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Owenby.
I just wanted to reiterate what Mr. Kelly touched on, that each one of our staff, staff teachers will get some kind of raise. So even those at the top end, it's, looks like, according to the SBQ, is two-point-four percent. So each staff, each teacher?
That's correct. Everyone will be valued in some way.
So I have a couple of questions and comments. The first has to do with, this board has a couple times mentioned an interest in paying employees, particularly those who have supplemental pay more than once a month, and that's, that, the investment to make that happen is not included in this recommendation. I'm curious if we could get a sense of what that would, what that would cost?
Ms. Barnes has actually done some analysis of that, and looked at staffing, and looked at what we did in the past in an old financial system, and maybe can share some of that with us now, and give you a sense of what it would cost. I do know when Ms. Burda was here, she had gone through, and at that point in time, we were paying extensive overtime to staff and payroll to do, paying all staff once a month, and then supplemental pay in the middle of the month. Then when we moved to Munis, the new system, that's when the change was made because of the overtime issue, and that was the savings. So we've looked at what it would, we've got to go back and get information from Munis about what it would take to reset this system to do supplemental pay in the middle of the month, and Ms. Barnes has made that request, and we're waiting on the, the information coming back. But also, the staffing thing would not change, and we would be back to an overtime issue, and the better solution would be to employ an additional staff member, and I think we've got a figure on what that would look like.
Yes, ma'am. We're, we would estimate the, the salary for that individual to be around forty-six thousand. That's salary and benefits, the total package.
So in order to, pending information from the software company on any costs associated with changing, it would be roughly a fifty thousand dollar a year.
Correct. And if it is possible to, for the finance system to be reconfigured, we would pay for that within this fiscal year to make it happen for next year. We do have the funds to do that. It wouldn't, the only cost going into next fiscal year would be the staff member.
There are additional costs for, you know, for direct deposits. So we, we've also checked with the bank to find out what our costs would be and the range, so I'm waiting on that as well. The issue that we run into, I don't know if you want me to explain this, but the issue we run into with the software, with doing supplemental pays, is, as we've, as we've described before, is that the IRS will allow you to either take the aggregate, or they will require that you tax at twenty-five percent flat. So what we're asking the software company to do, if, if it's capable of pulling in that employee's salary when taxing that supplement, so it's adding the two together. And if that's possible, then we can still meet the IRS guidelines and not have to tax the employees at twenty-five percent.
And that's where it was before, I presume, when we paid supplemental pay separately, employee actually lost money.
Or withholdings.
More withholdings, yeah. So we're trying to get the best solution, the best path forward to, to make it happen.
I have a question also about early college. There's an increase, a recommended increase in this budget to support that. I just want to, I don't want to get too in the weeds on it, but I want to make sure that, that our investment, WJCC's investment, isn't, won't restrict the number of students who may want to take advantage of that. So if a family is willing and able to pay, there are no limits based on our budget. Is that?
Dr. Carroll, get you to speak to that? Did I?
I do know that this would add fifty students if I'm?
Correct.
Right. But if more wanted to do it and could self-pay, could they access it?
That would be a question, a conversation we'd have to have with Thomas Nelson, as our partner. We have not, you know, this year, War Hill was the offering of fifty slots. We have not hit fifty. So, you know, based on our, the numbers from the, the first two years, and now the expansion, I think fifty would be a good number to, to start with. I don't think we'll be turning anyone away with that. And if we were in that situation, we certainly would not want to turn anyone away. We'd be looking to see if one of the schools did not fill all their slots, and, you know, it's not going to be a hard cap if, you know, Jamestown has fifty-two students that want to participate, and someone else doesn't, only has forty-seven, then we're not going to turn two students away.
So it was my understanding that for this current year, the division was, was paying for students who are participating in early college if, if they were receiving free and reduced lunch. So we're, we're paying for all students right now who are participating in early college?
No. Each student, we're paying for six credit hours at Thomas Nelson. Students who are eligible for free or reduced lunch may apply for an additional tuition assistance, which is a lump sum, and I forget what that is in, in front of me. Now, for some students, that covers depending on how many credit hours they're taking, in addition to the six credit hours that we're already covering.
So for next year, every student who participates in early college can have up to six credits covered, and then if they want to take additional credits, that's at their cost unless they're receiving free and reduced lunch?
Correct. That's the way currently, the program always has been.
Okay.
Or at least starting this year, we, instead of paying for the whole thing, we're just paying for the six credit hours.
Several citizens have requested the cost associated with opening a new middle school, so I would like to commend you for making that very clear on page eleven. Thank you. I think it's good that that's there. I wanted to spend some time talking about projections that began, I think, on page twenty-five. Basically, the five-year enrollment and budget projections, and first of all, I think, pointing out that there's a, there's a deficit, a potential deficit, a growing deficit every year, is something we just need to be keenly aware of as we talk with our funding partners about the future of education in our community. But what strikes me most is the assumption, I guess, of a one-point-five percent increase in wages and a nine percent increase in employee benefits assumption. We spend a lot of time talking about where we are compared to our neighbors in terms of paying. And so if we are going to make an investment in our staff this year to make sure that they're fairly compensated, and then in the next year, we're, in the year after, and the year after, we're looking at one-point-five percent, we can't predict or make promises. And I, and I understand the danger in that, but, you know, we have a, we have a bus replacement plan, you know, that, over that, and it seems to me that we should be thinking long-term about making sure that our employees are paid, compensated in a way that attracts the best and brightest and honors their incredible work. And so this year, we're making, we're going to try to make great strides, and hopefully that's funded, and hopefully we can do it. But it's not just a one-year thing. It's, it's year two, and year three, and year four, because everyone else is taking action around us as well. So I just wanted to point that out, that, that this can't be a one-year thing.
We'd be delighted to come up, to come up with a plan that would get us right at or above market value within a period of time, and actually bring that as a, some, a point for discussion wherever appropriate.
That way, I think we're being more transparent with our partners, and with everybody about what, what our goals and values are, and?
Exactly. If we take this as, I don't want to say it's a wake-up call, but like you noticed, at one and a half percent, we're still looking at a deficit. So needing to do more, of course, our funding, you know, partners will see this as well. So I, I think that's a good point.
I know they're struggling with the same issues. Yeah. So, I want to, I had a comment, I guess, question about the Child Nutrition Services budget. So I noticed that their fund balance took a jump. I'm going to assume that had to do with?
Smoothies.
Smoothies, yeah, okay, we'll say smoothies.
Breakfast.
Yes, okay, that's, we'll go with that.
Not coffee.
Or, yeah, or soda, yeah. But there, I also, but there also is a huge jump in their, in their budget. I assume that's because of the pay, the salary re-benchmarking, and then also new cafeteria staff at?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that right?
We almost, I think it's four-point-sixty-nine additional FTEs that will be at James Blair Middle School. And then we also have the regrade, which I believe that was about seventy thousand dollars. And then you have the, the raises as well.
Right. So that's got to be self-sustaining.
Yes, ma'am, and additional food.
Right. And so how are smoothie sales going to cover that? Because the fund balance prior to that was headed down, and we see a jump, but I'm curious, is that something that we need to be worried about?
Well, looking at the trend, it does seem that the cafeteria should be self, remain self-supported.
Okay.
We're not getting, gaining additional students, however, still looking at the trends with the revenue and expenditures.
I also wanted to thank you all for your work on the, the special education population and making that recommendation, and also English language learners. I mean, I think those are really critical investments that we need to make, recognizing the changing demographics and needs of our students. So I wanted to commend you for that. And then Dr. Beers and Mrs. Young mentioned the security aspects, you know, from the cameras to perhaps additional security guards. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, but is there a way to bring at least information?
We can provide information about putting security guards at the middle school and at the elementary school. We'll divide those by level for you. Maybe progressively, you know, one per building obviously would be a, a start just to consider the cost. When we bring that information, we then would have to go back and look at the, the final figure, and also ask for your direction on the potential for extra staffing and finance, so that we can make the mid-month supplemental pay happen for bus drivers. And that, you may be balancing a lot of these things against each other, along with the many things that are in the budget already.
Because there's no guarantee we're going to get what you've asked for. So if we add to that, we may be making our decision down the road later in the spring, even that much more difficult, so?
I think, I think any moderate change to even help security at some level, and that could be a progressive plan over a number of years as well, potentially, to get to where we want to be.
Yeah, and, you know, to get to where we want to be is a great question, because I'm not an expert in school security, and so I would be interested in getting, you know, the input from the police and other security folks as to what, what should happen and what should be done. I know, I work at a place that has thousands of cameras, and not all of those screens are looked at continually. So, you know, so what is the best paradigm for how that, how that should be handled? And, and then, then, then we also have to ask the question of ourselves, is, do we talk about that in public? So, there's just a lot of, lot of, lot of pieces to that.
So how are you all feeling about next meeting? As I said at the beginning, it is slated to be on the next meeting's agenda to consider this recommended, proposed budget for adoption. Obviously, no one can make that decision now, but I'd like to get a sense of what people, people are ready to?
I think, given what we've tasked the superintendent with, we're going to have more information that we'll need to consider and understand the, the opportunity costs. I don't, I don't think I would be able to make a decision at the next meeting.
Does anyone have any thoughts on whether these items that Dr. Heron would be bringing to us, these additional items with regard to potentially security, and then the supplemental pay piece? Would those be additive, you know, added, or would, would there be a discussion to, to replace anything?
Well, I mean, I think, I think we would look for Dr. Heron's recommendation as to, as to that.
Okay.
You know, for, as far as, I appreciate what Mrs. Owenby said, but as far as I'm concerned, it would, if we get that information before the next meeting, and for us to consider, I think, I think we're close enough that we, we could be in a position where we can make a decision at the next meeting, if we, you know, had that, well, well ahead of time. Actually, let me rephrase that. I could be in a position where I could make that decision. I don't, I can't speak for other board members.
I could.
Madam Chair, would you want it to be on as an information item, and then as an action item, and then you can make the decision?
That sounds great. That sounds great. We can discuss it first.
Discuss, and then move to action as a second agenda item?
Yeah, that sounds lovely.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Thank you all very much. This is one of the most important things we do. All right. That brings us to policies. Policy nine point, item nine-point-zero-one, new policy IGBF, limited English proficient students. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Paula's going to speak to, to this policy. It's a new policy.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Heron, I'm bringing two policies to you, to you this evening. The first one is IGBF, limited English proficient students, and it's a new policy, as Dr. Heron said. While we've been in accordance with federal statute and Title III requirements, we've always had procedures that address identification, testing, and services provided to our English language learners. We've never had a specific policy, and in our review of policies, we said this is perfect timing for it. So this policy will bring us in alignment with the SBA. Council has reviewed it and approved it, and said that we're good to go with addition to the policy manual. Owenby, is there anything that you want to share with the policy committee?
I just wanted to add that while this policy is in alignment with the SBA, we actually go above and beyond the, the state minimum to provide ELL services to students starting at age twelve. So our division provides those services to all children when they enter. So that just goes to show that we are supporting all of our students, and so, so that, so that language was tweaked to, to let everyone know that we're providing those services to children starting in kindergarten.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you. That brings us to nine-point-zero-two, retire policy INH class interruptions. Yes. We're seeking to retire this policy, class interruption, as it's covered under policy KK, school-community relations. And if you read the policy, there's really not much to it. There is no corresponding VSA policy, and council has approved and reviewed, supports this request. Any questions? All right. Nine-point-zero-three, thank you, Mr. Paula. Revising, recode policy JIA, search and seizure to policy JFG, search and seizure.
Ms. Berger?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Heron. I have actually four policies for you this evening. The first one is to revise and recode JIA from search and seizure to policy JFG, search and seizure. The recoding is in order to align it with how it's coded with the VSA policy. We had it coded differently. We also have pretty much revamped the whole policy to align with VSA policy. We did choose to leave out one section that is in the VSA policy, and that's regarding strip searches. We do not do strip searches.
Thank you.
So that, you're welcome. We also did add wording in lines seventy-eight through eighty-six regarding the pat-down search. In the VSA policy, it says that only an adult of the same sex may do that search. We do have some schools where we have two female administrators and no security off- Um, we do have some schools where we have two female administrators and no security officers, particularly our elementary schools. So we did add wording that if there were an imminent danger, that they could do that.
Policy Committee.
Yeah. I was trying to, uh, maybe you can explain that to me. Trying to figure out the context, um, of that. Next to the last paragraph, consent searches. I'm, um, that's not always going to be an option.
Correct. But it, but we can ask.
Give me the context for that.
So, so typically when we do a search at a school, that would be one of the first things we would say to a student is, is do you give consent? If, if we have a reasonable suspicion, we don't have to ask that.
Okay. All right. So if, if you, um, because that's what it said. You don't have to demonstrate.
Right.
Reasonable suspicion. So you, so how would you, um, you're going to do a blanket search or, or, I'm, I'm still not, give me an, okay, can you give me an individual, an example with an individual student where you might do that? See, that's what I was trying to figure out.
Yeah. Yeah, hypothetically.
When they want, when they come to a football game?
Example.
They're getting.
I mean, we don't have a reasonable suspicion, but we do do searches.
You go into a football game and you have a, or, or you're coming in, I don't know, you have a metal detector.
You wandered.
And everybody walks through it.
So you're consenting to that search without having a reasonable suspicion?
You could say, no, I don't want to do it.
Then you could turn around and go away.
Correct. Correct. We have a willingness.
I was just trying to, um.
Thanks, Mr. Kelly.
You know, I, so basically it really comes down to, you've got to have, um, a, a pretty strong suspicion.
You have to have a reasonable suspicion.
Before you could just say, you know, I don't care if you want to or not, we're, we're checking this out.
Correct. We have to have reasonable suspicion.
But it's not just a, it's not a fishing.
No, it isn't. No.
Okay. So.
Dr. Beers, if I may, so one of the things that was discussed in Policy Committee was, in looking at VSB language, um, initially the policy that was presented to us did not include, um, this language. Whether a search of a student is permissible depends on a balancing of the student's right to privacy and freedom from unreasonable search and seizure against blah, blah, blah. So that's, that's, and that language was added back in. So I think we are trying to ensure that, that, that balance of, um, what's reasonable and, and what's in line with student safety. So, so Julie and I, Ms. Hummel and I both wanted to see that language from VSB included in, in our policy.
It's just that it's so far away from the other part of it. That's why I, you know, um, um, and, because I, you know, I, I think, I absolutely agree that it should be in there, that students have rights, um, although sometimes they don't have the same rights that adults have. But that's, that's a topic for another discussion. Um, but, okay, I think I, I've got a better understanding of that. Thank you.
I just asked, but aren't there, um, wouldn't schools fall, fall under the idea that there are certain institutions that if you enter that institution, by the fact that you're even there, you have already agreed to, to be searched in the case that there is a, a, a situation?
Our, um, our barometer is a lower level than, for instance, law enforcement. They have to have probable cause, which is a much stronger sense of evidence. We have to have a reasonable suspicion. So I can't just walk up to a student and say, hey, it's Tuesday. I haven't searched you in a week. Let me search you. I mean, I mean, that's, that's what we're implying if we're saying that we have a right just by anybody being in our building. So we do have to have a reason. We have to have a report of something. We have to, we have to sense that there's something going on or that the student may have brought something to school in order to do that.
Okay.
Well, because in, um, you know, if you try to go visit a congressman up in DC, um, you give up that right. Because if you're going to go see him, you've got to go through, here's the bag, take your coat off, let's check your shoes, all that. And I don't know. Sometimes I think, I know it would be a real headache, but, um, there might be some part of that that, uh, might be worth looking into. But, but, um, I, I get that now.
Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, we could, we could play, we could play schoolhouse lawyer here all day long. We could play schoolhouse lawyer a little bit. Um, the one, the one thing as I was struck, and I'm not sure, I was just kind of want to know what the conversation, if there was any conversation about it, was parental notification. Um, you know, personally, especially when you get into the personnel searches, um, you know, a pat-down search of a student, uh, should there be an expectation that, that the parents will be notified? Is it, is it here where that should be? It should be somewhere else? Does it, should it not be there at all? It's just, there's, I mean, I, locker and desk searches, yeah, okay. Automobiles, you know, computers, I, I, you know. But when you start getting into, uh, personal searches, there's a, it gets to be a certain level where it feels like a parent should be made aware. But I, I don't.
That is our practice, but we modeled this after VSB. It's a, it's a good consideration.
Oh, and you have, you have, um, imminent danger to, you know, him or herself and, and others too. That, that language is in there. So it's like, that would preclude the need. It's like, wait a minute. This is really serious right now?
I'm talking about after, not before.
Yeah. Oh, af- okay.
So that you, if you've.
How soon after?
If you've searched my Johnny, should I be aware of that? Or not? I don't know. I don't know what the, I don't know what the, what the state of schoolhouse, of the, of the school law is, but it just.
Well, you can't, you can't, um, interview a, a minor, um, you know, without permission from the parent.
Uh, I think the, the police can't. I think we can.
We can. Yes.
Because we're not, we're not going to take someone's, um, freedom from them.
Right.
So I, I was just curious as, as, as to what the, you know, what, what student law, current law says about notification of parents. And, you know, I didn't, I didn't think about it before, but I, but definitely after, it feels like that there's a certain threshold where we might want to put it in policy, but I'm.
I can look at that for you.
Yeah, that's all I'm looking for.
So do we want to?
Some of it's just going to be judgment. You're just, you know, it's a judgment call.
Do we want to circle back to Policy Committee and pull this? Is that, yeah?
Well, I think, because I think parent notifications. I mean, if they're going to search my child, I want to know. And if they did search my child, I want to know that they did.
So can we get feedback on whether it belongs in this policy or whether it's covered somewhere else or whether it's part of the practice associated with that? Can we, and then, and then circle back through policy for us to see it next month? Does that, does that sound okay? Okay, great. Excellent. You want to move to policy JHA, Student Insurance Program?
Yes. We are recommending that we retire this, this policy. There is no corresponding VSB policy. The Student Insurance Program is actually a service that the county provides. Um, they, it comes through them. They provide us with the information. We make it available on the first day of, of school. Um, the Policy Committee did have some questions regarding how all that is managed and how many students. Last year, there were forty-two students that participated. This year, there are sixteen. In two thousand fifteen and sixteen, there were twenty-six students. As far as claims for the past three years, there have been none. Uh, so it, it is a very small number of students that participate in it. This service will continue to be provided. It's just that it's offered through the county. So there's not a need for the school division to have a policy about it.
Yeah. So the conversation was that it doesn't, the implementation of this does not change at all. Students will still have access to this. Nothing is changing, except we don't have a policy that speaks to it.
Any questions? Retire, nine point zero five, retire policy JHFD, student automobile use.
Again, there is no corresponding VSB policy. Um, there was, we had originally take, brought this to the Policy Committee in October. They did have a question about the search part that was currently in this policy, which is why we brought for the search and seizure policy to revise it simultaneously. Uh, there was also questions about the actual regulations. And so we did provide you links to all that information for each of the high schools.
That's why that was there.
Yes. One thing that Ms. Hummel and I did talk about with regard to this is that since, um, much of this is covered in, um, the student handbook, each of the handbooks are slightly different. And so we talked about standardizing each of the student handbooks, if, if at all possible, even though every school is unique.
I actually followed up on that, um, because I, it was my understanding that they were all similar. And what we discovered is that how, um, one high school's links were set up looked different. The layout was different, but all of it was still there. It would, you just had to dig at it a different way. And then you got to the exact same pages. So we did, I did go back and check on that for you.
Yeah.
Are, are the regulations, uh, transferable? If I'm a student at Jamestown High School and I want to go to something at Lafayette High School, are the parking regulations exactly the same? Do, am I allowed to park there? Or if I want to, you know, I, I need to go to, I'm little school. Uh, I pick up, uh, you know, one of my, um, one of my brothers or sisters. Is there, is, is there, I guess, sort of some blanket aspect to this that?
Parking regulations, as they're currently written, are really about parking during your school day at your high school. Right. And, um, the, the middle school handbook would have the regulations for what happens to pick a student up. So that would apply to whether it was one of our students or a parent picking up that middle school child.
Anything else? So, um, new policy JHCE, recommendation of medication by school personnel.
Um, this, there is a corresponding VSB policy. This is regarding, um, our teachers and staff members being prohibited from recommending the use of psychotropic medications to, for any student, to a parent. Um, this actually, um, is in code and it came out in superintendent's memorandum in two thousand and two. It is part of our annual training. They, starting last year, we were asked about our policy and how we were providing that information to staff. So even though it is in code, we decided it might be best to go ahead and have the policy, and it does correspond with VSB.
Any questions? All right. Ms. Boujwa, thank you very much. So all, so, one, two, three, four, five. So five of these policies will, uh, go to our consent agenda at the next meeting, and then nine point zero three will come to us at a later time. Okay. That brings us to our action items of the night. Ten point zero one, Personnel Actions. Can I have a motion, please?
I, I move that, um, uh, we accept the Personnel Actions, uh, that, uh, that were presented.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Nope. Hearing none. Ms. Sarza, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Onby?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye. Motion passes. That brings us to item ten point zero two, Adjustment to the Two Thousand Eighteen, Two Thousand Nineteen Calendar. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're asking you to consider a minor adjustment to the approved calendar. Um, Ms. Overkamp Smith is going to explain the purpose or the reason for that.
When we set the calendar, we tried to be cognizant of holidays. Um, so we set back-to-school night for high schools on September eighteenth. We unfortunately found after you had approved the budget, uh, the calendar, that, um, Yom Kippur actually starts the night before at sundown. So to help ensure that the most families can participate, we checked with high school principals. They are fine with us moving it, and we would like your approval to do so.
I did not ask for a motion, but that's because I wanted that to be explained first. At least, that's my story. So, Mr. Kelly, will you please help me out?
Madam Chair, I move approval of adjustment to Twenty Eighteen Nineteen School Year Calendar as presented.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
And any discussion or questions from Ms. Overkamp Smith?
No, the only thing I, I, I was curious about the calendar. I noticed that St. Patrick's Day is not an official, uh, holiday, which.
We'll take a look at that for nineteen twenty.
The, the day after that. So we can't, there's nothing we can do about that.
Yeah. I think we're, we are way behind Ireland in that one, I can assure you.
Just, just saying.
We'll keep that in mind for future.
Keep working on it.
Yeah. So it's still in September. It's not in October. And so.
And it's still, um, within the timeframe that high schools would like it to be. So, yes.
I, I appreciate the, um, family members who brought this to our attention, our community members, and I appreciate staff's response to it. It is critical that we are welcoming to all of our families. So, all right, with that, it's been moved and seconded. No further discussion? All right. Sarza, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Onby?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye. The motion passes. That brings us to Board Member Comments. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A few things tonight. Uh, when we had a school liaison committee meeting, I think that was last week. They all run together. But, uh, it was a very good meeting, and we had very good discussion with, uh, the Board of Supervisors who were present and Mrs. Ramsey who was present, uh, talking about our strategic plan, development of our strategic plan, and also taking a strategic look at our, providing our facility and capacity needs. And I thought, uh, it was a good discussion, um, very supportive, very understanding that of, of our needs. And so I'm, uh, I'm really looking forward to participating in that committee this year. I think it's going to be really good. Uh, I was able to participate. Uh, got an invite from Mrs. Vandegrift for, to speak at Berkeley English, eighth grade English classes. Uh, I believe that was last week as well. Um, and talk about the importance of, uh, writing and, uh, written, written communication in my profession as an engineer, uh, which normally is associated with mathematics and science and, and how that is, that is important. And, uh, and no matter what career really you go into, how the written language is important. So really enjoyed the class participation and, and, and talking with those students. And I think they like my rulers. Um, and also I, I was asked, uh, to go to the Jamestown High School Scholastic Bowl competition, the state competition. They had, uh, they had, um, the Jamestown Scholastic Bowl team had been undefeated all year, and they went to the VHSL finals and they, they, their last match was against Jefferson Forest, and they won it by ten points. And if you really want to feel not smart, holy cow, that's all I have to say. Those kids were amazing. Um, and the, the things that, the things that they knew that I know that I never knew. It was, it's very, it's, uh, was very impressive. So, uh, congratulations to them for winning the state championship in the Scholastic Bowl. And, uh, they're, they're really excited about trying to get their banner up in the, in the, uh, in the gym for their state championship there. So, uh, just as a, as a, as a general comment, um, you know, tonight was, I guess it was a fairly quick meeting, but we did a lot of things that school boards do. We talked about strategic plan. We talked about, um, budget. We talked about opening of James Blair. Uh, it's all very, um, can seem, can seem kind of mundane, but it's all very important and very, uh, very good stuff that the board is engaged in. So I'm very, very happy that, uh, we're taking active roles in that. So.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you.
Young?
Okay. Um, first, first of all, I want to just, um, congratulate and comment on the expert presentation. That was a community night for the middle school. They presented, um, an amazing program. And from what I understand, that was the first time that they had combined all of the middle schools into that activity. And then the next night was the high school. But I thought it was excellently run, and I was very impressed. And I noticed that Mr. Harris was there getting signatures from, uh, future students of James Blair, which was kind of darling in its, in its own way. And he was, he was so excited. And so I'm very excited for him and his new school. Um, also, we had the opportunity of, uh, Ms. Onby and I went to War Hill High School, where we had the opportunity to visit Project Lead the Way. Um, and all I can say between Project Lead the Way and, uh, Link Five, Concourse Nine and Pathways, um, our school division is doing a great job, which brings me to Concourse Nine. I had the opportunity of going to Jamestown High School last Friday. And, um, one of the things that they have for teachers, but I was kind of interested in the fact that they have the art teacher and the biology teacher paired. And when I went in there, the art teacher was presenting, um, a lesson on drawing facial features, which, which is what an art teacher does. But, but it had been connected to the seven traits of, of genetics. And, and they had worked together and they talked about, it was just, it was stunning how engaged the students. the students were. It was wonderful. And all I can say is congratulation to those teachers at Concourse Nine, because I was totally impressed, and I wish I was in the ninth grade. And I want to tell my friend Danielle, sign up your kid for that program. And then today, I had a chance to go to Dream Box. And I want to thank Mr. Thorpe for arranging that for me, because that is my specialty, is, is lower elementary and kindergarten. And it was wonderful to see the reinforcing of, of concepts that these students were receiving, and to see how excited they were when they got their token and everything. But, but more importantly, it was important to see how that program fit into the math program there at the school. And then I just want to encourage community members to sign up and participate in the strategic plan survey. So I'm very excited about our school division, and I want to thank the school division for everything they do to make a great learning place for our students.
Thank you, Mrs. Dr. Beers?
Oh, gosh, I sort of echo what has already been said. I would also like to, I think it's fitting and proper that members of the General Assembly recognize the outstanding job that Stonehouse has, has done, has been doing for, for a number of years now in becoming a Blue Ribbon School. I hope that they're so impressed that they might consider increasing the amount of revenue that they send down our way, so that we can keep those schools being just as top as they, as they could possibly be. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Ombi?
Yes, Madam Chair. I wanted to point out that staff provided us with recruitment outcomes a couple weeks ago, and I meant to speak about that, and I didn't. But just wanted to thank them for their work to share with us all your efforts to recruit diverse teachers. And, and there are a lot of recruitment activities, and I appreciate that. And I'm wondering if maybe in, in the future, we could also speak to ways to retain teachers, because we, if we had retained the teachers that we had, our recruitment efforts would have been more phenomenal, a little over eighteen percent. But then we lost some teachers, and so then, and so then we're down to eleven percent. So, but was, but was pleased with all of the outreach that staff have done. And like so many board members, had an opportunity to spend a lot of time in schools this week. Read Across America is always a lot of fun, and so had an opportunity to be with Mrs. Mrs. Young at Matthew Waley. And Stonehouse is always a highlight. That's just thebomb.com. And also, like Mrs. Young, the Curriculum Fairs, I have to give a shout out to our guidance staff, because they really did make that night very energetic and enthusiastic, and they put a lot of time and effort in, into doing that. And as a parent of a rising ninth grader, I really appreciated their, the skit that they did to help families understand GPA and how that relates to, to applying to colleges. And so just wanted to applaud their efforts for that. And had an opportunity with Dr. Heron to attend PTA Council District Level Reflections Award Ceremony. And again, wanted to thank the PTA Council for coordinating that event, for allowing our students to have that outlet to produce art, to be creative. We have to congratulate our students for all that they do. In addition to their schoolwork, they have this opportunity to do, you know, additional creativity and artwork on top of all their other demands. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I don't want to repeat too much, but I do want to visit the Curriculum Fair and just applaud that as just a wonderful addition to the way we do business. I think there's really tremendous, I attended the high school one, and I think there's tremendous high, high school spirit in each of our high schools. And I think that students really soon into ninth grade feel that school spirit and adopt it. But it's nice to have a community-wide spirit one night, and to have teachers talk about biology with a teacher from another high, high school. And so the energy there and really feeling as one community with three high schools, that really struck me. I didn't expect that. But I really liked it, because we are a small community, and so many of our students do know teachers from other schools through other, you know, whether it's sports or other things. So I think it was really, I don't, I don't know if that was an intended consequence, but it was something that I heard from a lot of parents, that it felt like we were one high school community, and that was great. I also want to add to Mr. Kelly and talk a little bit about the Berkeley Middle School Write Talk Event. I had the privilege of working with Dr. Heron in an eighth grade classroom, and I just brought down your game. I was just, yeah, I was, I was, yeah, a weight around your neck. You did a great job, and I appreciate that. And then Mrs. Young and I had an opportunity to visit Lafayette High School with Councilmember Pons, and that was a, a nice time to just walk around the building and.
Sell the new gym.
Yeah, we, yeah, well, we didn't.
Didn't go in the building.
Yeah, we stayed away. No, we were not, yeah, we're not allowed in. We didn't break any rules.
We saw the trailer.
But anyway, it was, it was a good visit, and I appreciate it. So is, is there anything else?
I just wanted to show, I forgot. So in touring Berkeley Middle School with Ms. Hummel, she's not here to talk about it, but then also War Hill, I was impressed that two of our principals are now totally integrated into our community and are, are part of the culture of their respective schools. So at Berkeley Middle School and also at War Hill. So there, it's like they've, they've always been here. They know their students by name, and was very impressed with those, those new principals.
All right. That brings us to twelve point zero one, upcoming events. On the eighth of March, the Special Education Advisory Committee is meeting at six thirty at the James City County Community Center. On the twenty-first of March, the Policy Committee is meeting at eight a.m. in the annex here, room three oh nine. On March twenty-eighth, the Twenty-First Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee is meeting at three thirty here in the annex, room three oh nine. On the, on March twenty-ninth, the School Liaison Committee is meeting at seven thirty a.m. here in the annex, room three hundred. And the National School Board Annual Conference is in San Antonio, Texas, April seventh through ninth. And Mr. Kelly, Ms. Ombi, Dr. Heron, and I are going to attend that, and we'll bring back all that we learned to everyone. Moving on to item twelve point zero two, upcoming meetings. Our next meeting is on the sixteenth of March. It's a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors and City Council at nine a.m. in Legacy Hall. James City County is hosting and chairing. On the twentieth of March, we have a closed session beginning at six in the Work Session Room of Building F in James City County, followed at six thirty by a regular meeting. And then we have on the tenth of April, a closed session beginning at five thirty in the annex here, room three oh nine, followed at six thirty by Work Session and Action Items. And with that, we will set the agenda for the next regular meeting. We have some items, policies going on to consent. We've got our action items for the C I P, and we're going to discuss the budget further and perhaps take action on that. Because, to allow us time to discuss the budget, there is not going to be an equity presentation next meet, meeting, but there will be a school spotlight. And I know Ms. Sarza told me which school, but I don't remember. So.
J B B.
J B B. Yes, it'll be J B B. So if there's nothing else.
Already told you.
That adjourns the meeting.